Rusty.
Yes, sir.
You all ready?
Yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Meeting for the City of Smyrna. Today is June 8th, 2015. It's 6:00 PM, and this meeting is called to order. For those of you joining us for the first time, this meeting is conducted much like a council meeting, and I'm going to turn off my phone as well. But we'd like for you to turn off your electronic devices. They tend to affect our recording equipment. For those of you joining us for the first time, we do conduct it like a council meeting, and as such, each application will include a presentation from city staff, followed by a question-and-answer session between staff and the board. Following the staff's presentation, we'll have the applicant present their case and answer any questions that we might have. Once all the questions have been satisfied, at that point, we will have an opportunity for anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. We ask that you come forward one at a time, state your name and address for the record, sign the sign-in sheet if you haven't done so already, and please direct all of your comments to the board. All right, the first item on our agenda is Z15-003. First of all, y'all got to bear with us for a second. We've got several items that we've got to procedurally table, and then we'll get to some of the more exciting, actionable items. But the first item on the agenda is Z15-003. This item is to be tabled to the July 13 Planning and Zoning Meeting. It is the rezoning of a subject property from R15 to RAD conditional for the development of six single-family homes on a 1.31-acre landlot 592. This is at 1514 Hawthorne Avenue. We have a motion to table.
Motion to table.
A motion, Mr. Roberts, second. A second, Mr. Rice. Before we vote on this, is there anybody here that would like to say, make any comments about this item? Okay. If we could vote, please. The motion to table is approved, 7-0. All right, the next item on our agenda is Z15-004. This item is to be tabled to the July 13, 2015, meeting. This is the rezoning from R20 in Cobb County to RAD conditional in the City of Smyrna for the development of 17 townhomes. This is located at 980 and 990 Pebblebrook Road, applicant Jesse N. Maxwell, Jr. Is there anyone here that would like to make any comments about this item? Okay. Can we get a motion? A motion, Mr. Rice. Second, Mr. Whittington. All in favor, please vote. We're all opposed. All right, it's approved, 7-0. All right, the next item on our agenda is item number Z15-011. This is a zoning request from R15 to RAD conditional for the construction of three new single-family homes. It's .668 acres and landlot 560. This is 1498 Walker Street. The applicant's Georgian Fine Properties. Mr. Martin, in the background, please.
Good evening. The Plan Zoning Board will hear this rezoning case today. Then it'll move forward to mayor and council after you guys make a recommendation. Mayor and council will hear it on July 20. This property is located at 1498 Walker Street. As Chairman Powell stated, it's approximately 2/3 of an acre in size. It's located in Ward 3. There is one single-family home on the property with an accessory structure. The applicant is proposing to demo the existing structures and build three new single-family homes. The zoning request is from R15 RAD conditional. And as you can see, the zoning map reflects that the subject properties to the north, east, and west adjoining the subject property are all zoned R15. The property that's catty-cornered to the northeast is, or I'm sorry, northwest is zoned RAD conditional, and that's, I think, Walker Manor. The zoning proposal does not have a future land use change associated with it. It will remain moderate-density residential, which is under 4.5 units per acre. As you can see, the zoning map reflects that all adjoining property and basically the whole area around it is all moderate-density residential. So this zoning request will maintain that specific zoning. Here's a proposed site plan for the development. As you can see, it's three single-family homes facing Walker Street with front-entry garages and a usable front porch on the home. We'll go through it. They're proposing a 25-foot front setback, a 7.5-foot side setback, and a 40-foot rear setback. These are the locations of their proposed stormwater management facilities, these water quality pits. In addition, they'll have a drainage swell along the rear property line that'll carry any water that moves past those infiltration pits and take them to this proposed drain inlet and then take it back out to the public stormwater system. This is the concept of the proposed home elevations. Pictures of the subject property. And these are pictures of the adjoining properties that surround the subject property. Committee Development recommends approval of the requested zoning from R15 to RAD conditional for three new single-family homes at a density of 4.49 units per acre with the following conditions. I'm not going to read these standard conditions. I'm going to pretty much summarize them, and I'll read the special conditions. Number 1, the compositions of the homes shall include a mixture of elements limited to, or including but not limited to, brick, stone, shake, hardy plank, or stucco. Number 2, the ditch facility shall be placed and screened appropriately and unobtrusive to inside and outside the development. Number 3, all utilities shall be underground. Number 4, the developer shall be responsible for any traffic improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer. Number 5, no debris may be buried on any lot or common area. Number 6, the developers apply with the city's tree ordinance. Number 7, all landscape plans are to be prepared by a registered landscape architect. Number 8, all common areas and yards are to be sotted and landscaped where appropriate. Number 9, this lists a specific amount of trees and species that are supposed to be planted per lot. Special condition number 10, the development shall maintain the following minimum setbacks: a front setback 25 feet, a side setback of 7.5, and a rear setback of 40. And number 11, the driveway shall have a minimum length of 22 feet, and that's from back of sidewalk to the front edge of the garage. Number 12, the development shall be developed with a minimum lot size of 9,400 square feet. Number 13, the right-of-way along Walker Street shall be increased 50 feet. Therefore, dedication of approximately 10 feet is required along both right-of-ways. Number 14, a developer shall provide a 5-foot sidewalk with 2-foot grass buffer along Walker Street for the length of the development. Number 15, all trees within limits of disturbance and not located within a tree protection area must be removed during the land-clearing and grading phase of the development. Number 16, the developer will be required to install a sanitary sewer main extension in Walker Street to serve all lots within the development. Elevations are the responsibility of the developer. Number 17, approval of this rezoning will be based on the site plan provided and dated here on 5/29/2015. And number 18, the applicant shall be bound to the elevation submitted with this rezoning application and dated and submitted 5/8/2015. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Martin? Thank you. All right, is the applicant in attendance? Could you please come forward, tell us your name, address for the record, and a little bit about your plans?
Hello, my name is Stanton Jacobs. I'm the applicant with Georgian Fine Properties, LLC. We're a family-owned company. My grandfather started the company in 1946 after World War II. My father took it over in 1983 when my grandfather succumbed to Parkinson's disease, and I'm now the third generation that began working full-time with my father since 2003 upon my graduation from Virginia Tech. We've been in business almost 70 years. We've never had a judgment, lien, foreclosure, bankruptcy, any blemish against our record, although there's been a lot of tough times over the years. We've been able to survive. I think, Mr. Martin, I agree with everything he said. He hit the nail on the head. I don't have any problems with any of the staff's recommendations. We've built a lot of homes in Cobb County and done a few projects inside the city of the Smyrna. These lots, I believe, are consistent frontage-wise with what's going on in the area, and I think they're deeper than a lot of the lots that I've seen in the city lately, which I think is great because people will be able to have nice backyards. We feel that our clientele will be probably people in their late 20s to mid-30s, late 30s, with maybe small children. I think it's a great opportunity to bring young professionals or professionals into the neighborhood, and our plan is to do, like what Mr. Martin proposed, I'm going to call it pseudo-craftsmen style, and I look very forward to working with the city on the final elevations and the materials used and so forth.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Any questions for Mr. Jacobs?
Do you have a range of what these homes will potentially sell for?
Yes, sir. The way these lots lay out and with the topography, you really can go either way. You could do three options: slabs, crawl space, or basements. I was probably going to do three basements, which would be, each home would probably be around 3,200 square foot plus on an unfinished basement, and we would hope to be in the high 500s, targeting probably the 599 range.
Any other questions for Mr. Jacobs? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing. At this time, we would like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to the application. Good evening.
I'm Casey Clavin. I live on Roswell Street in Williams Park. In discussion with a number of our neighbors, I've been asked to kind of summarize several points regarding this project. Number 1, I want to say that we're not opposed in general to the rezoning of this property, but we reject this project in particular. The site plan, pardon?
You're not, I'm confused. I'm sorry, you're not opposed?
We are not opposed to rezoning this property, to the rezoning of this property, in a general sense, but we, as a neighborhood, are opposed to this particular project as it is proposed.
Thank you.
Senior Planner Rusty Martin routinely recommends to applicants requesting rezoning in Williams Park that they meet with neighborhood residents prior to the PNC hearing, but this applicant didn't do that. We find that the site plan layout makes poor use of the area available. Other builders in Williams Park have built houses which fit well into the neighborhood by arranging multiple houses around a shared driveway. This puts the garages at the back of the house or in the backyard and saves the front of the house for a purely residential appearance, unmarred by the utility-building appearance of the garage doors. I wrote these notes on the way back in town this afternoon, so I'm a little confused here. The house elevations themselves. Though staff's memorandum on this case refers to elevations plural in many instances, the applicant has provided only one front elevation, no side elevations, and no rear elevations. And given that Special Stipulation Number 18 requires the applicant's adherence to that elevation, we're concerned threefold that the proposed house does not fit in with either longstanding houses or new-built houses in the neighborhood. Where ours is a neighborhood of individually-designed and sighted houses, almost exclusively incorporating rear-loading garages, this, on the other hand, is a subdivision-style house to be produced in triplicate and located like a drill team in lockstep conformity of front setbacks and equal spacing between the houses. The front-loading garages, actually located forward of the front of the house proper, and the short driveway are signatures of a cost-effective subdivision layout, which is confirmed by the Colonial Drive address on the front of the elevation sheet which was produced for a house two years ago. We ask that this rezoning application be tabled until the applicant can find a more Williams Park-appropriate house type to build and can show us three different houses. Very, very important that we not see one house duplicated three times in a row, particularly in light of the fact that they look quite unlike the houses on that street. If this is not to be tabled tonight, we ask that Special Condition 18 be largely re-amended to require three separate houses be built rather than one house three times. And then, on Standard Condition Number 1, while the language here might make good sense in some contexts, it's rather inappropriate in the context of Williams Park. Smyrna's oldest residential neighborhood boasts 19 houses still standing, which were built prior to the start of First World War I, the oldest being built in 1884, plus many houses built throughout the 20th century. What is universal among all of them is that the sides and backs are sided and trimmed the same as the front of the house. This is referred to as four-sided architecture, and it's been the norm throughout Western architectural history until modern times, when builders seeking savings began using less expensive materials on the back of the houses, and then less expensive materials on the backs and sides of houses. I've lost my place. A house with higher-priced materials on the front and lower-priced materials on the sides is a product of recent marketing. It's acceptable, but it's not desirable, and it fits poorly into a neighborhood predominantly comprised of traditional four-sided architecture. Since the applicant provided no side or rear elevations, we don't know his plans in this regard, but should this committee decide to vote on this tonight, we would ask that a special condition be added that requires the side elevations be sided and trimmed the same as the front elevation. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Is there anyone else in attendance that would like to come forward at this time and speak on zoning request Z15-011? In favor of or opposition to? Okay. Can we move for a, get a motion, please? Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Mr. Jacobs, could you come back to the podium?
Could you talk a little bit about involvement with the neighborhood and some of her concerns?
Actually, one of my cousins, Ryan Jacobs, who will be helping working on the houses with me, that introduced me to Peanut Gentry, the current property owners, actually lives right across the street on Walker Court at Walker Street Manor, and he's met with, I believe, some of the people involved in the HOA and some of his neighbors, and they were very excited about the project. I can tell you, just from a, obviously, a logical standpoint and a builder's standpoint, the three elevations will be completely different. That wouldn't do me any good to build three of the same exact-looking houses. I probably wouldn't sell very, very many of them. I know Smyrna has specific guidelines about the elevations, I believe, that you at least have to do what they call four sides, brick, where you have at least a water table, brick water table going all the way around the homes, and we're certainly willing to abide by what the city requires us to do for exterior veneer and the elevations. I had envisioned using a mix of bricks, stone, maybe some siding, and maybe some shakes to mix it up so it doesn't look completely, I don't want to use, like a track community. I mean, we're custom home builders. We build maybe, you know, 12 or 15 homes a year. All the homes are completely different. I don't think we've ever built the same home twice, to be honest with you, so it would be strictly custom homes.
Would you be open to engaging with the neighborhood further on your designs?
Yeah, I mean, I have no problem when it gets to that point where, I guess, where we come in to get our elevations approved. I mean, I want to be as friendly as possible with the neighbors.
It's a tight-knit group over there, so it would probably be in your best interest to get some support.
Okay. And what neighborhood? Was it Williams? I'm not familiar with the neighborhood.
Williams Park.
Williams Park. Yeah, I have no problem during the design of the elevations, meeting with whoever we'd like to meet that lives in Williams Park and showing what we're doing, and, you know, four eyes are always better than two. But I can promise you, we're going to put a very nice product that fits in with the new developments that I've seen going around in the area.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Jacobs while he's here? Okay. Thanks for coming back. Appreciate that. All right, any further comments? Okay. If we could, have a motion at this time?
I would like to make a motion with the caveat that we're fortunately or unfortunately not an architectural review board, a zoning board, because all of your comments made perfect sense to me, and I would 100% agree with that. That was some of the questioning with the involvement with the neighborhood. It's kind of a, there's a zoning question, and there's an architectural question on the table, and they're kind of two separate things at this point. I would encourage staff to make sure that elevations for individual homes are produced, and I think it would be great to see the neighborhood involvement, to get the neighborhood's support behind your project. But I'd like to make a motion to approve zoning request Z15-011, rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the construction of three new single-family homes.
Motion, Mr. Kemp, second. Second, Mr. Campo, thank you. All in favor, please vote, or please vote. All right. The application's approved, 7-0. Just to reiterate some of the things Mr. Kemp said, and we tell every developer that comes up here, it would behoove you to work with the neighborhood. It'll help you get your project, and it'll also put a lot of, get your project on the right foot, but it'll also put a lot of eyes out there to help you and guide you. They live there. It's important to them. Thank you for that, and good luck with your project. All right. The next item on our agenda is Z15-012. This is a zoning request and annexation for rezoning and a zoning amendment for the construction of a 250-unit independent senior housing development on a 4.8-acre tract in landlot 691. This is at 4840 and 4788 Hanson Drive. This is the Creekside Village Development Group. This zoning request is to be tabled to July 13, 2015, by Planning and Zoning Board. Is there anyone in attendance that came for this item that would like to make any comments? We got a motion, Mr. Rice, to table. A second, Mr. Roberts. Please vote. Roberts. Said it correctly. It's approved, 7-0. All right, the next item on our agenda is zoning request Z15-007. This is a rezoning from R20 to RAD conditional for the development of 16 single-family homes. It's a 6.15-acre tract at landlot 338. This is 3744 Plumcrest Road. The applicant is Venture Homes. Mr. Martin, in the background, please.
If y'all remember, this item was tabled at the last PNC meeting on May 11. Give the applicant time to gather more information and collect more, do a little bit more studying of the stormwater issue that plagued Bennett Woods subdivision. This item will be heard by you all tonight, and then will go before the mayor and council on July 20. The subject property is 3744 Plumcrest Road. It is really located in between North Cooper Lake, Richland Circle, Havlin Way, and Plumcrest Road, and it's highlighted and blue up there for y'all to see. It's approximately six acres in size. It's located in Ward 7. There's two single-family homes out there with accessory structures, and the applicant is proposing 16 single-family homes, 14 of which will be on a new public road, and two of which will front on Havlin and Richland Circle. Venture Homes is requesting rezoning from R20 to RAD conditional at a density of 2.6 units per acre. The city's future development map, i.e. the future land use plan, reflects this whole area as being suburban residential, which is under three units per acre. The applicant at 2.6 units per acre is under the three-unit threshold, therefore, there's no land use change associated with this rezoning request. no land use change associated with this rezoning request. Here's the proposed site plan. As you can see, a new, a new public road will be coming off North Cooper Lake Road onto the property and then creating a cul-de-sac subdivision. 14 of the homes will have front-entry garages and face this cul-de-sac and new road. The proposed stormwater management facility will be located behind lot 12, 13, and 14. That storm management facility will be tied into stormwater management improvements within the right-of-way of Plumcrest Circle. This improvement, which it's not depicted on here, will go from the subject property all the way down to Highview Drive and tie into the city's system. So all the water that will leave that detention facility will be piped and will be piped within the roadway or right-of-way of Plumcrest all the way down to Highview, which is the nearest point in which the public system is located. There's their proposed open space. These are the proposed home elevations associated with the rezoning. This is a picture of the subject property as it stands today. These are adjacent properties that are joined. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from R15 to RAD conditional for the 16 single-family residences at a density of 2.6 units per acre with following conditions. Condition number one, the composition of the homes shall include a mixture of elements, including but not limited to bricks, stone, shake, hardy plank, and stucco. Number two, the developers provide a vegetated buffer with a minimum width of 20 feet along North Cooper Lake Road. Number three, there shall be protective covenants with mandatory HOA with all the, associated with all the lots. Number four, the developers should provide at least 200 square feet of common open space per lot. Number five, the detention pond and retention pond shall be placed and screened appropriately to be unobtrusive to the homes inside and outside the development. Number seven, or number six, all utilities within the development should be underground. Number seven, the developers shall be responsible for any traffic improvements deemed necessary by the city engineer. Number eight, strip of brick pavers or stamped concrete shall be installed at the subdivision entrance. Number nine, development of any streets shall conform to the city's standard. Number 10, no debris should be buried on any lot or common area. Number 11, the developer shall install decorative streetlights within the development. Number 12, the developer will comply with the city's current tree ordinance. Number 13, all landscape plans must be prepared, stamped, and signed by a Georgia-registered LA. Number 14, all yards and common areas are to be sotted in landscape. Number 15, list the specific amount of trees and species of trees that would be planted on each lot. Number 16, the development shall maintain the following minimum setbacks, a front setback of 30, interior side in between the homes of 5, 5 feet with a minimum separation of 10 feet. Exterior sides, which on the site plan reflects is lot 1 and 14, which will have a minimum setback of 25 feet, and then exterior sides for 1A and 2A should be 10 feet, and finally a minimum rear setback of 30 feet. The development shall maintain the following minimum lot size, 9,000 square feet. The proposed homes shall have a minimum floor area of 2,100 square feet. Number 19, 14, new homes shall be accessed from the new proposed road, and two homes shall be accessed from Havlin Way and Richland Circle. Number 20, the developers shall provide a 5-foot sidewalk and 2-foot grass buffer with inside and outside of the subdivision. 21, the driveway shall have a minimum length of 22 feet, and that's measured from back of sidewalk to front edge of the house. Each unit shall have a two-car garage with decorative garage doors. Number 22, the developers shall be responsible for any stormwater management, water, or sewer improvements deemed necessary for the provision of service to the community. Number 23, no stormwater management facility or portion thereof shall be located on any portion of the proposed lots. The stormwater management facility shall be solely located on HOA property. Number 24, all trees within the limits of disturbance and not located within a tree protection area must be removed during the land clearing and grading phase of the development. Number 25, approval of the subject property for residential attached-detached zoning district shall be conditioned upon the development of the property in substantial compliance with the site plan dated 5/4/2015 by HGD. Number 26, the applicant shall be bound to the elevations submitted and dated 5/4/2015. Approval of any change to those elevations must be obtained from Community Development Director. That, I'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
At this time, I'd like to ask, are there any questions for Mr. Martin?
Just real quick, so just on number five, the detention pond that screened appropriately, can you expound upon that just a little bit, how that would be done?
Typically, that is done through the use of either fencing and landscaping. The pond will be either fenced or, and/or landscaped or landscape. Depends on the size of the pond and the grade and slope and all that.
And the 10% reduction, you've got the report for, I mean, that's the minimum.
I could let our city engineer answer that question, but based on an initial review of the preliminary hydrology study, he feels comfortable that they'll be able to meet the city's standards for stormwater management.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Martin? Thank you. All right. Well, this is a public hearing, so at this time, I'd like to have the applicant come forward and tell us a little bit about his application, his plans. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sean Randall. I'm the chief operating officer for Venture Homes. We're located at 1580 Terrell Mill Road. That's Marietta 30067, I think is the zip code. It's right there at I-75 and Terrell Mill. We've been there for probably, oh, 20 years now. We've been actively building in Cobb County for 30 years. We'll do about 200 homes this year. We have one active project in the city of Smyrna that this planning board unanimously zoned back in, I think it was October, for a 49-unit townhome development right off of Church Road that we are in active development right now. We're putting sanitary, not sanitary, sanitary is done, we're putting storm drain in the ground. So we hope to be building homes there sometime, you know, maybe early, mid, you know, mid-fall, so, and have product, you know, for sale, you know, for 2016. Again, our plan, we should, we should sell about 200 homes this year. 80% of that product is in Cobb County. We have nine active developments and/or properties going through zoning right now, eight of which are located in Cobb County. So we're very pleased to be here tonight to make this proposal to the planning board. And let me just give you a few facts about the property. As you can see from the site plan, our request is from R20 to RAD conditional, which is 2.6 units per acre. We're very pleased that we have staff support and staff recommendation for approval. I wouldn't be standing here tonight if we did not have that. We think that's very important, to let the professionals look at the, look at the property and make the, make the comments. Do we meet the future land use plan? Do we meet the intent? And I think one of the strongest statements in the memorandum to the planning board was, the zoning proposal would be consistent with the infill development patterns in general, in the general area, and is within the land use designation of suburban residential on the city's future development plan. To us, that's very important. We want to be good neighbors. We want to comply with the future land use plan of the city, and we think this project does, and we do so, I think, very well. And I do want to comment on some of the metrics that, that the staff used to evaluate this plan, and I think it's very important. You know, they compared our proposed project with Austin Lake, with North Cooper Lake Place, with the park at North Cooper Lake, and with Tackett Farms. And you, when you look at our density, it's 2.6 units per acre. Those four projects, their average density is 2.66 units per acre. So we're slightly below on that metric. The average lot size for our project is 10,156 square feet. The average lot size of these three projects is 11,751, so it is slightly bigger. But if you look at our site plan, and I don't know if it'll show up, no, I don't, I don't guess it does, but behind lots 1A and 1B, there's a significant amount of open space, and there's a significant amount of open space near the detention pond that's not being used by the detention pond. If we were to factor that in, and please understand that this is a preliminary site plan. We actually sent staff a new site plan today based on comments and feedback I've had from members of this planning commission, who said, where's your amenity? Where's your open space? Where's this? Now, our requirement for open space, as Rusty Martin said, is only 200 feet times 16 lots, or 3,200 square feet. Right now, we've got over an acre of open space, and that open space doesn't include detention ponds, it doesn't include anything else. So what we're going to do is redraw some of these lot lines, make some of these lots bigger. And at the end of the day, our average lot size, when we propose to commission, will be bigger than the average of all these communities. Okay? And the only one that will have, will have slightly larger, I think the Austin Lakes is still, still larger at 16,000 square feet, but they've, they've also got 11, 12, 14 lots, I don't know, that are way below our minimum lot size. Not our average, but our minimum lot size. So I think it's very important to understand the metrics and what we're dealing with. The other thing that we're, we're very proud of is that we think we're going to do very quality homes here. I hear this notion of cluster homes, or zero lot line, or things like, this is very traditional, single-family homes. And there is one correction I would like to make to the staff memo. It says the minimum lot width is 55 feet. Our lot width minimum is actually 65 feet. The 55 feet is our house size, or that's the maximum the house size can be and still fit within the envelope. So our lot width at the building line, now not, not, you know, cul-de-sacs come in and dimensions change and all those kind of things, but our lot width, our lot width is 65 feet. That compares to the minimum lot width at Austin Lakes of 40, North Cooper Lake 32, park at North Cooper Lake 40, and Tackett Farms at 45. So, and not, I'm not saying that that's what the builders built out there, I'm just saying that's what they could have built there. Our homes are very much traditional family. All the elevations are being designed by Roger Caldwell, Caldwell Klein, very prominent architect here in the city of Marietta. He's the one that did all the elevations for our park at church project, townhome project. And I do have five of those elevations. I don't know if you've got an overhead or what, or I can, I can pass these around and let, and unfortunately, at the time I made this application, they were still in the process. We didn't have them. I also want to stress that councilperson Ron Fennell has asked that we be present at a town hall meeting on June 17th to discuss with neighbors and concerned citizens our exact plans and to go into, you know, great detail at that time, and more importantly, answer any questions. I feel like there's a lot of misinformation out there, and hopefully, tonight, we can kind of clear some of that up. So, again, we're very, we're very proud of the product. We think the square footage-wise will range, we're asking for a minimum, I think, 2,800 square feet, 2,600 square feet, but the product will typically be, or will be, 3,000 to 4,000 square feet, 3,800 square feet. And when I say square feet, let me clear that up. Heated square feet. Does not include basements, does not include garages, does not include porches, overhangs, you know, covered stoops, covered front porches, covered rear porches, heated square footage. Our price point will be from the low 400s to the high 400s. We think we're going to be very complimentary with, with the new things that are being built in, in the surrounding areas. So we're very excited about, you know, bringing this product on. We're excited to have the staff approval. Clearly, we're going to comply with all the standard conditions, items 1 through 15, all the special conditions, item 16 through 26. And, you know, we want to be a good neighbor. We want this community to be a real asset to the city of Smyrna. So I think, I think that having been said, you know, there's a lot of positives associated with this. We are constructing, and I've got it on the new site plan that I can pass around, we are going to construct a 10-by-14-foot open-air pavilion for use of the homeowners to gather, to, you know, have a picnic with their families if they would like. We are going to have sidewalks throughout the community. Our lot size, I think, is very favorable and will do nothing but increase. We do have two lots there, one that fronts on Richland, one that fronts on Havlin. Those lots will get significantly bigger, 13,000 probably goes to 15,000, the other one's 15,000, that'll go to probably 20,000 square feet. So we've got several things that we can, you know, play with and hopefully improve this community as we move forward and go through the full planning process. I also want to address the stormwater very quickly, and I want to thank Eric Randall, Scott Stokes, Rusty. They have spent a lot of hours and a lot of meetings with us, and I've got to say, in my, my 25 years of doing this, I've never produced a hydrology study prior to getting my zoning. But that's what the city wanted, because, and we were very concerned about our impact on Bennett Woods, and, and we, you know, we want to be good neighbors. And, you know, Eric, please correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding of all the hydrology and how it works is, in just kind of general layman's terms, we have to study the pre-runoff condition. What happens in a five-year event, a 10-year event, 100-year event storm? What is that runoff? And under no circumstances, and Eric, again, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not an engineer, nor do I play one on television, but we cannot exceed the runoff at any point in time than, after our development is done, than what exists prior to the development.
One certification?
Yes, 90%. And so, yes, and we are prepared to meet that standard. So per Eric's last comment, we will actually be, when we're developed, less runoff at any given point in time than what exists today. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's fair.
Eric, get your microphone.
Oh, there we go. There we are. From the preliminary hydrology study that was submitted, the higher return period storms are significantly reduced to the point of, it appears about a 75% reduction, where in the existing condition, it's almost 16 CFS cubic feet per second as a peak runoff. This preliminary hydro shows a 3.4 CFS as an outflow rate. So it is significantly reduced. It will help the downstream system in Bennett Woods.
Well, and I think that's very important, and people should understand, again, it goes back to, we want to be a good neighbor. We want to, you know, two years from now, three years from now, whenever- We want to, you know, two years from now, three years from now, whenever this project is fully built out, we want to be able to leave and say, "Hey, we left this situation better than what we found it." And we have improved the community. Because I know there's been, because I've heard a lot of comment from members of the planning board and from folks, you know, tell us about the stormwater. And that's really why this whole, you know, we would have been here last month, except for, we said, "Nope, let's table this, let's do our homework, let's cross all the Ts, dot all the Is, and make sure we get a plan that makes sense for the city of Smyrna." So with that, I would ask for your support. I'm here to answer questions. We think this is a good project, it has merit, and fits very nicely in the future land use of this city.
I've got two questions for you, Sean. First question, if you don't get RAD, are you going to build at R20? The second question is, if you do get RAD, when do you plan to start?
It would be very difficult for us to go forward under a straight R20 zoning. The RAD just is more flexible, allows us to do certain things that you just can't do under R20. We're not trying to maximize the RAD zoning or density. If we were, I'd have a site plan up here with 18 homes on them. They'd be much narrower, they wouldn't be the quality that we think that this neighborhood deserves. And so, just to answer your second question, if we get approval from the mayor and council in July, we'll go through the same process we did on our Church Road project, which is, you know, complete the full engineering drawings on the site. We would tweak it accordingly, make sure all the easements are in place, you know, make sure we've done, again, all our homework. We'd submit those plans for staff review. They would be reviewed, and, you know, it's been my experience, the staff here in Smyrna, you should be very proud, they do, again, from my experience, and I work with several counties and municipalities across the metro Atlanta area, the city of Smyrna staff does an excellent job. Do I agree with them all the time? Absolutely not. Do they agree with me? For sure not. But at the end of the day, I'm proud to report, the project we have on Church, that we're building today, is so vastly superior to what we originally submitted. And part of it is that back and forth, and understanding what's going on, and just like, you know, we're trying to troubleshoot this, you know, stormwater runoff problem in Bennett Woods, you know, we had other issues there on Church Road that we were trying to address and make better. So, again, yes, it's very important for us to get this RAD conditional zoning, and we're ready to go right away. We think that 60, 90 days after we got approval, we could hopefully have an LDP at that point. And again, based on our Church Road experience, I think that's reasonable. Development time takes about six, seven, eight months, depending upon, you know, whether you hit bad weather, good weather. So, again, our plan would be to be, you know, actively, you know, building homes in early Did I answer your question, sir?
Yeah, in an effort of transparency, Mr. Randall did reach out to, I believe, everybody up here via email, phone call, had asked to meet in person with me, but we were unable to get our schedules together. He, to his credit, he really tries to reach out and make sure everybody's informed. And regardless of what happens tonight, I think you'll find that he'll work with, in this town hall meeting, which brings up a question, that he'd be willing to work with the neighborhood to make sure that you all get the development that you want too. You didn't, do you have a location specified for your town hall meeting?
Well, it's really up to councilperson Fennell.
Okay.
But I do believe he mentioned having it right there at the city offices on Atlanta Road in the O'Brauner Building.
And I'm sure we'll, we'll make a good effort to get everybody...
And I don't want to steal his thunder, but that's what we had talked about, is being available. I think he has several projects that are, you know, coming up in his district that he wanted to talk about.
All right.
And I apologize if I spoke out of turn on that. I mean, that's really his meeting. But just like, let me back up, just like what we did with Church Road, Susan Wilkinson, councilperson Wilkinson was kind enough to set up kind of an informal meeting prior to the council meeting, where I met with, and I think Corky, I'm sorry, his last name escapes me, who's the councilperson on the south side of Church Road, and then the councilperson, Susan Wilkinson was the councilperson on the north side, and probably 30, 40 of their constituents across the street from our development in one of their gazebos. So I would certainly be willing to meet, as needed, with whomever and whatever group or groups that, you know, have a keen interest in this property.
Well, we do appreciate your diligence. Any other comments for Mr. Randall? And I don't mean to cut you off, but...
No, no, I'm done.
I do believe we've got a few people here that'd like to have their voice heard as well. All right. All right, we're just going to go ahead and take a motion. No, just kidding. All right, everybody, this is a public hearing. At this time, we would like to ask if there's anyone in attendance that would like to come forward and speak in favor of or opposition to this application. Please come forward one at a time, state your name and address for the record, and if you haven't signed the sign-in sheet, please sign the sign-in sheet while you're there. But come forward one at a time, please. And I'm taking notes, so bear with me.
My name is Alan Dunn. I live at 3726 North Cooper Lake Road, right where the new road will be cut in. And I've lived there 28 years. I bought my little house 50 years, I mean, it was 50 years old when I bought it, so nothing these guys are going to do are going to hurt my property value. But I will tell you this, I've been working with Rusty, he's been open and honest with me. Sean shared some with me. The gentleman that just spoke has never spoken to me at all about what's going to take place. I have many concerns about the impact this will have on me, but number one, I think that the schools are already crowded. King Springs, the kids are in trailers, and the density that you're going to put here, I don't see how it's going to improve the overcrowding in the schools. My number one concern, and I've talked with Rusty about it, he shared it with me, he thought, he thought this would be pulled. He didn't think that they would be able to meet the requirements for the stormwater runoff and the issues there. I want to know, when he read the stipulations, will that drainage that's going to be going towards Bennett Woods, will that be mandatory that they complete that prior to building the project?
That's a good question for the city engineer.
Yes, it will. They'll be submitting that as part of their plans for the infrastructure construction, where they put in the road and the storm drain...
Yes.
Before it goes to final plat, which makes each individual lot that they're allowed to build on, that all has to be in place, and I have to get what's referred to as an as-built certification from their engineer that shows that what they built is in conformance both with the plans that we approved, and our stormwater management ordinance, and the zoning stipulations.
Does the city pay for that, or does the developer?
The developer pays for that.
Okay. Well, you know, I've heard a lot about Bennett Woods and the drainage that's going to go that way. I'm more concerned about that runway you're fixing to build there for water to come out of this subdivision with 14 houses. And I've lived there right where North Cooper Lake and this new road will meet for 28 years, and I've seen that North Cooper Lake flood. Anytime there's a major rainstorm, it floods right there where you're going to have this road going in. And I've seen the city work on it, but it's still, when you have a major storm, that water right there floods North Cooper Lake. And I don't know what you're going to do about that, but I do see you building a runway here for all this water that's now, you know, covered with woods, it's going to be an asphalt road, and that water's going to come right down into North Cooper Lake. And I've seen, I've seen people have to drive through water that deep as it is now. I mean, have you addressed that?
Not as part of this review. Generally, at this stage of the game, we're looking to see, does it, can I say the game? Excuse me, at this stage of the process, we're looking to see, does the, does the plan meet with the overall future land use map, and does it comply with our ordinances?
So nobody studied that?
We, I have looked, to finish answering the question, their original proposal had tying into that existing storm drain system in North Cooper Lake Road. And we said, "No, you can't do that. That's already overloaded." So we know anecdotally exactly what you're saying. And I will be working with Scott on our side of the infrastructure, and Scott is Scott Stokes, Director of Public Works. I'll be working with Scott to say, "Okay, what can we or do we need to do for, to improve not only the flow in that area, but make sure it doesn't have an adverse effect downstream on the east side of North Cooper Lake Road? This will actually reduce the amount of area that's draining to that point, and that same standard of no more than 90% of the peak flow rate can go down that street." So if they get into a situation, though, even though they've got some more area going down Plumcrest Road through that stormwater management pond, if they don't meet that same 90% of existing of the peak flow rates for each of the studied storms, then they're going to have to provide some measure that meets that standard.
Well, I think you need to hold off before you approve this until you work that problem out. And I don't understand why you're going to approve it tonight. I know you're going to approve it. I can't fight it, I'm one person. But you approve it...
Mr. Dunn, stay at the microphone so we can get it on the recorder.
You approve it, and then he wants to meet with the neighborhood the 17th. That's kind of like getting the cart before the horse, you know? He should be meeting with the neighborhood before he comes in here to get it approved.
Right, and to give him his due, this is a great opportunity for you all to come out and have your voice heard, right? And he can get on record, and there's just going to be things that are brought out tonight that maybe he hasn't thought of, maybe the city hasn't thought of, that you guys are there every day, you see it, you live it. And those things, this is part of that vetting process, that where the dialogue actually helps, and so that we can get these problems out there and see if there can be a repair done to it.
Okay. Now, the only other issue in his comments, now Rusty shared with me all the documentation they turned over, he mentioned 3,600 square foot heated space in these homes, and a price of $450,000 to $500,000. The documents I got, maybe I looked at it wrong, it said 2,100 square feet. I mean, I'd like to clear that up, because that's a huge difference.
Rusty.
Were you looking at the staff recommendation? Because the staff recommendation, one stipulation says they've got to be a minimum...
It was the document you sent me.
It's a minimum.
Yeah, it's a minimum.
Okay.
So that's their floor.
My mistake. All right. Really, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. All right, and some of you guys are hearing the buzzer go off. That's, we've got a five-minute timer up here, and obviously, we haven't gabbled anybody yet, but come on, the next person that'd like to come speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and sign the sign-in sheet.
My name is David Mayo, and I live at 511 Rebecca Lane. Okay, when you're talking about Bennett Woods, I live in Colonial Heights, which is right connected there. I've been there since 1992. I've noticed this since I've been there. Water comes down and it goes to the creek down at the end of Rebecca Lane. When I moved here, the first thing they told me was this is considered a storm, I mean, a flood zone. And they requested that I buy extra insurance to protect my property, which I live on the top of a hill, and I haven't purchased it. But I notice when it goes down below, at the end of Rebecca Lane, there's a stream that runs down through there. I am so concerned for those people living down there, because I've seen it rise up four or five feet and almost came to their homes. Then also, if this water comes down there at Plumcrest, at, I think it's 5930, I have had my neighbors to come over there within, this has been back a few years ago, water running down there flooding their house, and we had to take, put their furniture up on chairs, tables, and everything. It's, I think it's 559, 537. And this water's coming down there, and I mean, if you would put a, you could put a boat out there sometime when it's raining real bad. Even, it goes around my house, goes down, and goes down to the creek. Steve Kendall, that was a pastor here, living here, he had to put in what they call a French drain to keep water from running from my house down to his house to the creek where the creek's overflowing. Okay, you say that you're going, they're going to, Fennell's going to have a meeting. I personally feel that this should be tabled until we have a community meeting, instead of passing this bill today, because this guy here, I mean, I don't mean anything about him, he got a golden tongue. And so, people really need to listen to what he has to say, because it's all about what they want, but what about us as a community? We have to deal with this. Okay? Plumcrest, for example, the curves at Plumcrest are already three inches below the concrete there, I mean, the asphalt. That's going to be, are they going to put new streets in, sir? Or new curves?
They are going to be taking up at least one side of Plumcrest and putting it back into the same condition, meaning that if there's the capacity off the curb with that depression, then that'll be going back in the same way. I don't know the actual construction methods they're using, but if they go through and saw cut the asphalt inside of the curb and inside of the center lane, so you get an area on that 12-foot half of the road that's, say, five feet wide, then they would re-asphalt between the two, and it would not have touched that outside edge.
Okay, there, on Plumcrest, on each side of the street, the curves are at least three to four inches below the asphalt. You're talking about bringing more traffic down the street going to this property. The street's already bad. If you really look at it, they're going to, almost to the dead end of the street, at Plumcrest, where it's going to run into it. We're having problems with the curves there. So if they're not going to take, the city's not going to do anything to help us on Plumcrest, which I don't live on Plumcrest, but I live on the corner of Plumcrest and Rebecca Lane. I feel that this meeting should be tabled. I'm in occurrence with this gentleman here. What he's saying is absolutely true. And if you look back in history, it says that Bennett Woods and Colonial Heights is in a flood plain. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Mayo, thank you for coming, and I think you're very well spoken as well. Mr. Randall's not the only one here with a golden tongue tonight.
Okay.
All right, real quick, let's get something clear. This is a planning and zoning meeting, and this meeting is, it's an advisory committee. We're going to move based on empirical data, we're going to move based on our zoning ordinance, we take other factors into consideration. However we move on this application is not the final word. A lot of times, developers come through here and they have timelines that they have to execute for their contracts on specific properties, and I don't know the situation with Mr. Randall's property here tonight. But they need to get that timeline moving, otherwise they lose the opportunity to buy the parcel. Just bear with the process, if you will. He wanted to get this out so that we could start hearing some of these issues, so that he can take action on them. Now, it doesn't behoove him to bring a meeting, to come to a meeting and get turned down here, because if he turns around and goes to mayor and council, where the final vote does carry a lot of weight, then this particular property would get locked up for 12 months in a no-development zone. So this is not a final hearing. It is a normal situation for the citizens to come out and have their voice heard, developers, you know, take all that information, and then start formulating the plan to kind of make everything fit with both the citizens and the city, and the development. So just keep that in mind as you come up and speak. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Harry Rowland. I live at 3766 Plumcrest Road. I live at 3766 Plumcrest Road, which, if you come right down Plumcrest, I'm right on the corner, Plumcrest and Cloudland. I have several concerns about this. One, we've talked a lot about the stormwater management. That's something that, I built this house in '73. Last year, I just put a major addition on it, so I'm not really looking to make any moves anytime soon. I didn't, I wouldn't have spent that money to put the addition on if I thought I was going to have to move. But we have lived with this condition with the stormwater. It runs behind the house between me and the property we're talking about, and then runs between our two houses, and then runs down to Plumcrest. A number of years ago, I talked to a city about trying to do something about this, and no one seemed to have a solution to it. It looks like it's taken development of this for somebody to come up with a solution. And I've also noticed there's been two or three variations on how that water's going to run. At one time, I thought it was running down to North Cooper Lake, and now it's running down Plumcrest. So, I have a concern about that during the construction. And also, what, and I guess this is a question for you, what year storm is this designed for? Is it 50-year, 100-year, or what?
The stormwater management facility, their detention pond, is designed for up to the 100-year storm.
100-year?
Yep. The pipe capacity by ordinance is a 25-year storm design capacity, but based on the numbers they're showing me in their preliminary, it's not even going to hit that level because they're holding so much on-site. And I'll say this for you and for anybody, I am happy to walk through what these calculations were. One of the things I think I do well is explain hydrology issues in layman's terms until you understand it. So, I'm happy to walk through what they've submitted. This is a document that's available through the planning and zoning agenda item as a link that you can get this document as well. This is not secret information.
Well, I share some concerns that already had been, had been talked about here. One is the density. And I understand the developer's situation in trying to go to something, he can get a higher density. I think R-20 would be more, would be more appropriate for the property of its contingents to this piece of property. And for that reason, I'm not for this rezoning. I think R-20 is what it should be, what it has been, and I think it should stay that way.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming out.
I am Allegra Goodman. I live in Bennett Woods. Many of you know me. Thank you for the hours you've spent on the phone with me in the last few weeks. I have a lot of issues. I'm just going to focus on one because I know it's going to be represented elsewhere. And some of this is information for y'all, but I know that it's in the fiscal year budget to have a storm drain put at my corner on Plumcrest in Highview to help with the current water situation. And if it's my understanding, the new drain will tie into that. My main concern is many years ago, somebody was surveying my backyard, hired from the city to find a storm drain they didn't know where it was, which I believe runs through my backyard somewhere. My concern with all this extra water, with the problem we already have, and then adding this new development, will the current drains be able to handle all the water? I just don't know if the age of them are to date with the current standards of that. So, that's a question I have. Couple of these have already been addressed, so I'm not going to readdress them. I'm wondering if the hydrology report that was taken was taking into consideration the excess water that currently puddles in, at the corner of Plumcrest in Highview. And when it really rains hard, it does flood to the point where it can't actually carry the water through the two current drains on the other side of the street to where cars do have about a third or half of their tires filled. That's when it's really, really raining like the other week, not typically quite that bad. But I wanted, again, want to know if the current storm drains are able to meet today's standards? Can they handle the increased water from the current issue as well as the proposed site? And then I, if this goes through, would like a commitment from the builder and the city that both drains would be 100% installed before the clearcutting starts because it's going to add a significant amount of water, and we just can't have any more water down there. And will the new drainage plan that they have for their properties help with the other issue, which is anybody on my side of Plumcrest from the current property all the way down to my street gets what I call a river, it's a little excessive, but it is a water flow all the way down. We get North Cooper Lake water come this way, the way the ground is sloped as well as from there, and it comes, when it really rains, I have a 10-foot gate, I open it up, and water just flows freely through the street. So, I just, my main concern is that the water issue is dealt with. I know it's partly a city thing and partly this, so I, that's really all I got. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Thanks for your comments. All right. Is there anyone else? We've got somebody stood up behind you first. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Howard Betts. I live at 3760 Richland Circle. The stormwater has been addressed, but I don't think it's really been addressed. This is a totally different development from what is surrounding, it's in its surrounding, much higher density. And I do have a question. Can y'all answer a question for me?
We can try.
What is the current zoning on this proposed development?
Rusty, is it R-20?
Is all of it, all of the proposed development R-20? Or are there different zonings? I know there's several parcels. It's all R-20? What about the property that's contiguous to this? Is it all, do you know the zoning on it yet?
Did it say correctly? On the west side of Cooper Lake is R-20, but on the east side of North Cooper Lake...
Pine View?
No, no, no. On the east side of North Cooper Lake, where it's RAD, and then I think it's R-12.
But that's not contiguous to this development, right?
It's across the street.
It's somewhere across the street. But everything around it is R-20?
Is R-20, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Betts.
My name is Laura Lamb, 526 Pine View Drive.
Your last name?
Laura Lamb, L.A.
Lamb?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Lamb.
Going off of the zoning, since this is a zoning, mainly for zoning, currently the sign that was posted up said R-15 to RAD. All I've heard has been RAD for the proposed site. There has been no R-15 spoken of, but as a community, that has been posted for us to see as a choice between R-15 or RAD, I'd like that to be addressed because R-15 and RAD are two different zoning densities for our neighborhood.
It was an error. It was an error.
Everything I saw strictly and was spoken as RAD, not R-15 to RAD.
The signs typically say, like, are, what zoning they're, they currently are, what zoning they're going, trying, they're proposing.
Right.
So, what he, I think what Mr. Martin's saying is it was listed at R-15, it should have been R-20.
R-20, okay. That's what I wanted to clear up. So, I'm going back to R-20 as our community. The density of our acres right now is about one house per .75 acres. The RAD being proposed is 2.6 houses per the acreage. My house, if you pull back up, is the fourth one on Pine View. I will end up with three houses in my backyard. Massive. So, in addressing the developer, everything that he was comparing to his projects, the sizes of the zoning sites, the houses, the heated homes, not once addressed the contextual side of the zoning homes in the current area of R-20, the contextual traditional homes for this area of residential are usually just one story with some basement or split-level homes for the R-20 zoning sites surrounding this current development. Also, for the zoning, in our side of the road of Pine View, the backside of the development, in 2008, during the flood, they have flooding in the backyards. The grading of the current side will be coming down towards the road once the road is completed, and it also will go down towards Highview. So, that's not being addressed on that side. The drainage hydraulics, which we say should be about 100-year for the flood plain, but you address it being 20, you know, usually when it floods in this area, it is a fast rain, and it will, capacity will be a 25-year. So, it's not addressing the actual flood issues the neighborhood is actually having now, not counting the density of the zoning that the developer is proposing currently. Passing this today, instead of tabling it, the concern is that if it goes to the council next month, it'll get X for a year. I don't think that's a bad idea, considering the concerns of the neighbors that have not been addressed by the developer before this meeting. I'm trying to focus on zoning because this is what you guys are wanting to hear. So, going back to the flood plain, the drainage coming down, I don't, it hasn't been, it has been addressed, the Rebecca and Plumcrest, where is that going to come down on the end of the street on North Cooper Lake? And that would, how would that water address North Cooper Lane, the actual road, from the road, the curve, and at where the actual drainage is going to come out in a flooding situation? And during construction, if the drainage is not addressed beforehand completely, any of the runoff from that site during any rain will block any drainage and will be crazy in flooding area. The density was addressed with the schools. My concern is drainage, density of traffic. I have two little ones, which is why we moved into this neighborhood, was because of the zoning, the larger sizes of the neighbors, the actual site. If anybody moves to Smyrna, they're look, a lot of the ones are looking for the older homes are looking for the size lot that the neighborhood offers. You're changing that by passing this or allowing him to continue with tighter homes put together that are not contextual and have not been addressed to the tradition of this Bennett Woods neighborhood, et cetera. Yes, there are RAD on the opposite side, those are newer developments. And I also, just your concern, at least for me as an architect, is beginning to look, a lot of spot zoning are popping up, just, I buy this land, I want to spot zone this. I want this land, I want to spot zone that, when this neighborhood is a traditional R-20. We have no problem with an R-20, homes coming in, is the density and the zoning of this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lamb. Really appreciate your comments.
Good evening.
My name is Alan Wencl, spelled W-E-N-C-L. It's an unusual spelling, so I'll, I live at 4040 Manson Avenue. I've been a resident of Bennett Woods for 21 years. I've been working with Allegra on this. I'm probably the most frightening thing here tonight. I'm not an attorney. I'm a hydraulics engineer. And I, I really think this thing should be tabled.
Mr. Wencl, we're going to have to ask you to step down. We can't have two engineers in here speaking on the same item.
I'll step outside with him.
I'm joking.
Just humor, humor, please.
Oh, that's great. That's great. I was just contemplating how much I'd have to give you. No, I'm joking. I'm joking. I'm just messing with you there.
I really think this, this whole deal needs to be tabled as of right now. The signing, and my first issue is nothing to do with engineering, but the signing as posted had it going from R-15 to RAD when it's actually R-20. It was, you know, confusing to the residents. We have, we're supposed to be R-20. Why is this showing R-15? Has this already been changed to R-15, going to RAD? So, there's a, I think even a mediocre attorney could have a field day with something like that. Now, from my perspective as a hydraulics engineer, I have some concerns about the runoff that will be generated. The proposed site plan that was up here, I don't, I don't know how we get back to that, but it has the detention pond routing going out to North Cooper Lake. And the developer said just a little while ago that they've submitted a new proposed site plan as of today. So, we've had, haven't had a chance to really see what's, what's going on.
And staff, staff wasn't prepared because he, it's, it's the developer trying to do the right thing, or in his view, do the right thing, and continue to improve his plan. But staff, you know, they can't make a snap judgment on a plan they haven't had time to review.
Right. And as my employer would say, I turn in something and then change it at the last minute, not ready. So, you know, talking of stormwater detention pond routing coming down Plumcrest, you've got 12, 15 homes on Plumcrest that will be disrupted by the construction. You're going to have a minimum of three utility relocations for each home, water, sewer, gas. You know, the residents on Plumcrest are going to have a rough time with this. It said it'll be done before construction begins, but that's going to require a tremendous capital outlay on the part of the developer. How can we guarantee that it will be completed, it'll be paid for, and it won't fall on the city if something goes, goes flat?
Bonds.
Bonds?
Yes.
His bonds?
Yes.
Okay. Not city bonds. All right. Let me see what other notes I have here. Runoff you had addressed, the runoff, the outflow from the detention pond will be reduced from what we get right now. But the total volume that'll come off in a 24-hour period will probably be tripled.
Double to triple, yes.
Yeah. So, the total volume that downstream is going to have to accommodate...
That's a fundamental of our stormwater management.
Yeah.
That goes all the way to the state level on how...
I know.
You are correct.
Yes.
But, but whether or not that's handled appropriately by the stormwater management facility is what determines whether or not that's an adverse effect on the downstream properties.
Yes, but the downstream properties are going to have to deal with that tripled total volume that comes out of there.
Correct. But it's not going to be all at once. It's going to, that's the point of their detention facility, to slow it down.
Right. That's what the detention pond does. It spaces it out over a 24-hour period.
Exactly.
Yes. Okay. I think that addresses the hydraulic issues.
And let me reiterate, I would love to have an offline. I was very skeptical of this project when it first came in, and it was a flat-out no when they were discharging to North Cooper Lake Road. But in the time we've gone through and what they've done to bring this to point, I've seen a lot of encouraging backup that shows how this can be accommodated.
Well, I'm concerned with the 1,000-feet of construction.
Mm-hmm.
You know, are they going to use reinforced concrete pipe or corrugated metal pipe?
Reinforced concrete, metal.
RCP.
Reinforced, RCP.
RCP?
Yes.
Okay. Since I'm on the 30 seconds left, my other concern is the lots 1A and 1B. Those are going to have a Bennett Woods address. Those are the ones on Havelon Way in Richland Circle. Bennett Woods is R-20. Those are going to be Bennett Woods homes because their driveway is going to be in Bennett Woods. So, they should remain R-20. I've got five seconds left.
I was waiting for a comment. I was getting my pencil ready. Thank you, Mr. Wencl. Appreciate you coming out. All right. Anybody else that'd like to come forward at this time?
Good evening. I'm Charles Hunter. I'm on the board of Austin Lake Homeowners Association. I'm the treasurer. We have passed a resolution, and we're right across the street from all this, and we passed a resolution that I would like to submit at this time. All of the seven directors, except for one who was absent, who is sitting right here, he's the secretary, Matt Callaway, and he's present tonight in opposition to this. We don't know much about storm drains or anything, and it really doesn't affect us as it does these other residents, but we are opposed to this sort of density across the street from our subdivision and, which is, which, although it is zoned RAD, and I guess that was, that's a, it's not built that way. It's, I should say, about 94 of the homes in Austin Lake are RAD. We also now have the Austin Grove homes, which are seven homes that are, I believe, R-15, if I'm not mistaken, that are right across the street. So, we have a mixture of those. The developer stated that he compared the homes to several subdivisions, including my subdivision, Austin Lake. But if you, and I know that we have one street called Terrace Court that has slightly smaller lots than the rest of the subdivision. If you take that out, our lots are much larger, they're more incomparable with the Bennett Woods lots. But Terrace Court was done a little bit with a, with a little bit less money, but nevertheless, if you look at that, the problem with the density of these homes is the developer is putting these homes on long, skinny lots. And these homes, particularly on the north side, excuse me, I guess it would be the east side of this new cul-de-sac that he wants to put in, are 10 feet apart. I mean, a squirrel can jump from the roof of one home to the next home. So, I don't think that's consistent at all. There's no... There's no homes in Austin Lake a squirrel can do that, unless it's a flying squirrel. And I don't think that's at all consistent with Bennett Woods, or Austin Lake, or any of the other homes in the area, of course, with the exception of the, of the Concord Hall, which overlooks, you know, they look at the side of the dry cleaning store on, on that little cut through there. So, so we're opposed to it based on the density. And it's interesting, the developer was asked, well, if you don't, if you don't get R A D, but you, but you get R 20, can you still go forward? My understanding is developer hasn't purchased this property. He's got a contract contingent on this rezoning. So he's not gonna lose anything other than some time and some effort, uh, 'cause he hasn't bought the property. Somebody will develop this property if the present seller wants to sell it, and put homes less dense in that area. I believe that, and somebody will do it. Now, I mean, God help us all, we all try to make money, and developers are no different. And I, and I think that what he's trying to do here is he's trying to maximize his profit by putting these homes right next to each other, 10 feet apart. And that is totally inconsistent with, with the, the homes in the neighborhood. I mean, uh, Bennett Woods is an old, very traditional subdivision. It's a big subdivision in Smyrna. Uh, gosh, we had a state senator live there. I think we've got elected officials that live in there. It's one of the, uh, areas of Smyrna. We don't need to be sticking in a bunch of cluster homes, and I'll call them that, 'cause that's what I think homes 10 feet apart are, are cluster homes, into the middle, R A D, in the middle of all this R 20. If you look, and I did today, if you look at the Smyrna zoning map, the, it's real, it's easy to see the R A Ds, 'cause it's in green. And they're all over the place, they look like new developments, 'cause they all have cul-de-sacs in them, and a lot of them are on the edges of Smyrna, look like maybe annexed into the city and this sort of thing. And they're usually not surrounded by R 20 zoning, zone properties, and particularly in old, traditional subdivision like Bennett Woods. So we're opposed to it for, for that, for the density reason. I don't have any reason to believe the developer won't build a nice house, or that his houses are unattractive, or anything like this, but just, just put fewer homes in there, and I think that's consistent with the neighborhood, and consistent with what the people that live in the area would like to see.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Really appreciate your comments. I believe we had a couple over here that would like to come forward. Again, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kay Clapper. I live at 3927 Plumcrest, and I've been there about 13 years. I've lived in Smyrna for about 30 years. And the reason I picked this neighborhood was because it had big yards, it still had aged trees and shrubbery that wasn't torn down, and these houses are four-sided brick usually. And I'm totally against this whole project, because we have 55 years, most of these homes were built in the 60s, and most of the people who lived there have lived there since the 60s. And I am totally against putting 16 homes on 6.5 acres, besides cutting down all the trees. I don't care what he says, he's gonna cut down all the trees. I already have animals coming from all the other properties where they've cut down the trees in my yard. And, um, five to 10 feet apart, what happens i- in an emergency? What happens if one of the houses catches fire? They're all gonna go up. You know, they're all gonna catch fire. So, um, I think there's precedence, and as the zoning board, you have an obligation to follow the precedence that has been set for 55 years in this neighborhood, to keep the yards at the size they are, R 20, and not put 16 homes on such a small space. All the cut-throughs, like Highview, and all the other cut-throughs, when school's in, are bumper to bumper every morning. Cooper Lake is bumper to bumper every morning. Now, you think, 16 homes, they're gonna have at least two cars, they're probably gonna have kids, that's more traffic and congestion in the neighborhood. And we don't know yet what the Braves Stadium is going to do to our neighborhood. Also, there's standing water in the neighborhood right now. I'm not gonna go into all the water issues, because I think it's been addressed, but there is standing water in the neighborhood. A few years ago, the city decided to stop taking the trash and the leaves out of our gutters. So now, trash and leaves are left to flow down, down into the drainage system. And so it backs up. It floods. The, the yards are on hills. Luckily, I'm on top of the hill, but my two neighbors, they flood every time there's a rain, two or three days in a row. And it doesn't have to be a heavy rain. So I'm concerned about all of that from 16 more homes in the neighborhood. And I don't think it fits the neighborhood. The neighborhood is very stable, it's, it's single occupied families, and, uh, you know, it, it's, it's just not going, it, it's like she said, it's gonna be spot zoning in a neighborhood that's been established for over 55 years. That's all.
Thank you very much for your comments. One of the things I do wanna address is, and Rusty, you, you might wanna point this out, about the proximity or the distance between structures, and what, what measures have to be taken in that situation. I don't believe there are any that are five feet apart, which I heard five feet and 10 feet, but...
Yeah, they're gonna be, I mean, there's a minimum interior side setback of five feet, so there's gonna be a minimum of 10 feet, but, you know, depending on...
Homes, right?
Right.
Not, not to the lot line, which you're making...
Between structures.
So it's five-foot setback?
That's what I said, five-foot minimum setback, and with a minimum separation of 10 feet between the homes. Um, the city fire marshal sat in on our review of the rezoning request. He's satisfied with the cul-de-sac design, he's satisfied with the, with the building separation. Um, if they were to go below 10 feet, then they would start getting into ingress egress issues, and, and having a sprinkler, the homes and stuff like that. So, um, the fire marshal's been involved, he, he's fine with it, he's not adding any extra requirements that they need to meet. So at this point, from a staff perspective, it, it's okay.
Thank you, Rusty. All right. This guy over here, he's, he's done that three times. You can't raise your hand, you just have to get up and go.
I'm Robbie Hewitt. I live at 3759 Cloudland Drive, next to the cemetery.
Welcome, Mr. Hewitt.
I, um, I'm a real estate broker, so I'd love the opportunity to just sell his homes when he's got them done. I'm not really opposed to the R A D zoning. I am opposed to the two lots that will enter into Bennett Woods being R A D. I think those should remain R 20, as another person has commented, 'cause they will be part of our neighborhood. I just don't think that that fits well in our neighborhood to change that. I'm opposed to the five-foot setbacks. I think from the two-story home perspective that we're gonna be looking at, and all of us that live at least within viewside of this are gonna be looking at walls of these structures. And with five-foot setbacks, 10-foot separation, if we know he's gonna go to that standard, if that's what he's granted, we're just gonna be looking at a, at a solid surface wall over there, 'cause we know he's gonna cut most of the vegetation out in order to maximize his construction. So I think that if you're gonna grant the R A D, you need to probably put in maybe a 20-foot side setback, and I know that's going to reduce the number of homes, and that's, that's my point of view. R A D's okay with me, but this is too many homes on that piece of property. I think it should be fewer homes, a little more separation between the two. Other people spoke of the drainage, you know, it's an issue that, you know, I guess I don't need to rehash.
Thank you, Hewitt.
Thanks.
Please state your name and address for the record.
David Merlino, 3754 Cloudland Drive, and I live right behind this proposed neighborhood. Have any, do any of you know Bennett Woods? And you've been in the neighborhood, okay? I don't know how the zoning works, I don't know how you decide, but Bennett Woods is a neat, neat community with older homes and huge lots and big trees. And so when you talk about you're gonna put homes in with 9,000 square feet minimum, it just sounds ridiculous to me. So I don't understand if the ridiculousness factor is, is taken into account, but I certainly think it should be. It sounds preposterous to put 9,000 square foot homes, 9,000 square foot lots in this community. My lot, he talked about the C, I find that CEOs, um, tend to give facts that help their point of view, right? That's their job, that's what CEOs do. Sean Randall is no, uh, different than any CEO. So he, he pointed out a bunch of neighborhoods that had 2.6 units per acre, okay? But those neighborhoods are not Bennett Woods. That's what's relevant, is Bennett Woods is relevant. I'm right next to this development, my lot is 26,000 square feet. He's talking about minimum of 9,000 square feet. And then he said here, "Well, in Havelon, we're gonna put bigger lots." Well, how does that work? It's not in the, it's not in the zoning, so, so when he puts the houses right next to each other and they're 9,000 square foot lots, do I stop him and say, "No, you told Joel, you told Joel Powell you're gonna have bigger lots in Havelon"? I mean, how does that, if you guys pass this thing at 9,000 square foot lots, there's nothing stopping him to put 9,000 square foot lots in Havelon. It doesn't make any sense to me. It cannot, it cannot be passed. Um, I've been paying taxes in Smyrna since 1996. I've lived in Bennett Woods since 2012. Thank you, babe. And most of my neighbors have been paying taxes, they, most of my neighbors have been there for 30, 40, 50 years. And they've been paying taxes in Smyrna City for 30, 40, 50 years, okay? Those are relevant numbers. He talked about his stuff in Cobb County, he talked about a 49-unit townhome that he did in Smyrna. Okay, these are all, this is all irrelevant information. What is relevant is what this community looks like, how ridiculous this development will look next to this community, how long these people have lived there, how long they've been paying taxes in this city. And I really think that should be considered, and there's no possible way you can pass this thing that says 9,000 square foot minimum lots, and then go on his word that the ones in Bennett Woods are gonna be bigger, because he said so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Merlino. Sorry. We won't have any more outbursts, please. Please, please. Last time I did that, I got, I got applauded the rest of the night, so please. I don't wanna reduce the minutes, I mean, we've got a couple birthday boys and girls in here that are employees that would like to see the sun before they leave, but if we could, we appreciate all your comments, we want everybody to be heard, but just...
My name's Dustin Reed. I live at 3835 Plumcrest Road. I've only been paying taxes in Smyrna for 10 months. So, just FYI. I didn't plan to speak. I'm also an engineer, not a hydrology engineer, but I'm next to Allegra, and between our houses is a, about a 10 to 15-foot retaining wall, and there's a corrugated metal pipe that runs underneath that, under her front yard, to the corner of Highview and Plumcrest. So, um, when it rains significantly, uh, the water on the outtake, the invert on the outtake, uh, can't get to the culvert, because the curb is higher than the pipe invert. So, um, doesn't matter, there's a 12-inch pipe, it gets about three inches of water, and it backs up into my basement. So I hadn't, originally hadn't planned to speak, but hearing that there's gonna be almost triple the, the flow rate, or not triple the flow rate, triple the amount of water flowing down, uh, down Plumcrest, I'm a bit concerned. And I, I just feel like the due diligence hasn't really been done, um, if there's so much hydrology issues, that it just seems like it's kind of a, oh, we'll fix this when they start, as opposed to, I, I just feel like, um, we need to make sure there is a solution to these hydrologies issues if the, if the system is already overloaded. Um, just seems a little, I don't know, just my two cents, uh, as a resident. And I just wanted to bring that up, I'm sorry to beat a dead horse, but I just, I get water in my basement, and it doesn't even rain that hard. And I just bought the house 10 months ago, so... But yeah, I will repeat the things, we, we love the neighborhood, we moved there because of the walkability, I have kids, um, concerned about the pooling of the water at the corner of the street, the culvert is about, I mean, the opening on the culvert, I, I could, I could literally crawl into it. And so it just feels unsafe with the ponding with that, and if there's a detention pond up there that will be filled, probably, I don't know if it will be, it will be constantly having water in it, if it's gonna be retaining water, um, as a danger issue with my son, I, I don't know. So, um, just, I just feel like that just needs to be brought up again, um, and it needs to be addressed in a more coherent, thorough method, which I feel like it hasn't. So, that's all, thanks.
Thank you much, Mr. Reed, and welcome to Smyrna. You gotta be fast out there, folks.
I'm Betty Roland. My husband just talked a few minutes ago, but one thing I haven't heard addressed, we have been in our house for 42, oh, excuse me, I'm getting emotional. I don't want the development, and one reason why is because of the water that comes between the houses, the retention pond, but also something that no one has addressed, uh, in the neighborhood, is since we've been there so long, we've seen the developments along Concord, like the C V S, the apartments, and that sort of thing. And they come in, and they clearcut, and they build these houses, and then we lose the, um, um, the foliage to catch the water and everything. But, uh, also, we are losing our water pressure. And I keep thinking about 16, 17 houses, and what is it going to do to our water pressure? Our water pressure is already low. And I have, uh, called the city many a time, uh, a long time ago, about the water pressure and everything, and they were saying that there wasn't anything that they could do, whatever. And then I mentioned something about the water, and, uh, the reaction that I got from the gentleman at the department that I called one time, was that, um, if, um, you're having this problem, he said, uh, uh, he said, "We can't put a drainage, whatever." He said, "We're up there at the, at the dead end of Plumcrest, where they're talking about building." He said, "We can't put in a drainage system." So I said, "What can we do?", because I said, "They're, uh, they're cutting the, the trees down, and, uh, we're, uh, getting water from Concord and everything else." He said, "Well, I tell you what you can do." He said, "You can sue." So no. I think if Ventry wants to be a good neighbor, leave us alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roland. And there's a, there he is. Good evening, sir, welcome.
My name is Robert Malone.
Hold on, Mr. Malone, you gotta get to the microphone so we can all hear you.
My name is Robert Malone, and I've lived in Bennett Woods since 1977. And, uh, I've paid my taxes every year on term, time, and, and I hope I've been a good neighbor, and, uh, have a Gideon Jail ministry down at the Smyrna jail every Wednesday night, and we supported the city of Smyrna. And, uh, have an issue that hadn't been mentioned yet, and that's, uh, stormwater runoff. Bennett Woods is at its, I've, I've lived in Bennett Woods on Manson Avenue, 4156 Manson Avenue, since 77. And that runoff creek down there is at its maximum capacity, believe me. When it rains hard, it runs over into the yards, it does damage. It's doing damage to the creek, the, the city put in walls, rock walls down there previously years, years ago. It's, it floods over, and it's washing out the, behind the rock walls, they need repair. I've called Public Works and my councilman and so forth, and, uh, I haven't received any callbacks yet, but made several calls, I guess I'll keep on calling. But it's at its maximum capacity, and it does damage, and it runs through all our backyards there. And on top of that, uh, it's, it's eroding the roots of some trees, it's 100-foot tall, on the banks of that creek. And, uh, if they were to fall, they would fall towards the houses, and my mine, and my neighbor's house, and it could cause serious injury or death to us if one of those trees fell, because it's right on the creek bank, and it's eroding the roots. And, uh, there's bushes growing up and English ivy that my neighbor planted maybe 30 years ago, I don't know, over there, that impedes the flow of water. So, and another thing, we have an area that goes under Willowbrook Road, where there's two smaller pipes, instead of one big pipe under the road. That clogs up every year, sometimes multiple That clogs up every year, sometimes multiple times, and Public Works has to come out and clean it out. All this stuff rushes down and it clogs up. I was told a few years back that by the formula, two of the smaller pipes would carry off as much water as one large pipe. The formula may have been good, but the common sense was wrong. Because the two smaller pipes, things sticks wash down and they get caught in those pipes. It clogs up those pipes. I have to call Public Works to come out and do it every time. The formula was good, but it didn't work. Because I live there, I see it, lived there for 38 years. Somebody's going to have to do something about that creek down there. And I'll be writing the mayor a letter soon, registered letter. And that's my concern, is a water runoff. And again, I don't understand, well, the retention pond has been mentioned and I can, and it was mentioned that when you build all this stuff and roads and everything, the water is going to just be all over the place. Now, up there, it looks like to me there's grass and pine straw is all that's there. I don't know where this water is coming from up there now because it looks like to me it would soak up everything, soak up all the water, basically. It's coming down there now from, from that property. But it must be going out to Cooper Lake Road and coming down and, and then coming down from the stop sign, the stop, four-way stop out there, coming down through there and then coming down through Cooper Lake and the Ford Lane and coming down. But it just seems to me that, that if the, I don't know who's going to maintain the retention pond and all that kind of stuff. So, but anyway, something's got to be done about that creek. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Malone. We appreciate your comments. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Matt Callaway and I live on Traymore Trace in the Austin Lake neighborhood across North Cooper Lake Road from the proposed site. Three or four years ago, we spent, my wife and daughter and I, almost a whole year looking for a home throughout Cobb County and kept coming back to Smyrna. We had lived in Mabelton for about 10 years prior, loved the area, but wanted a home with a yard, with established trees and an established neighborhood. And found that along the North Cooper Lake Road corridor and found that in Austin Lake. Found out this week that Austin Lake is actually zoned RAD. Would have never imagined that in a million years because it certainly wasn't built that way. If it had been built that way, we would have turned in, taken a look and turned out and went, and went on our way. Mr. Randall, I understand, you know, he, he has a job to do. I have a degree in engineering and I'm a banker by profession, so I certainly get, get his, his job. He was clever when he compared his proposal to other neighborhoods and then lumped Austin Lake into that comparison because all of the other neighborhoods, to the best of my knowledge, are quite frankly nowhere near the, the proposed development. He mentioned that we have maybe nine or 10 homes on smaller lot sizes than he is proposing for, for his development. What he failed to mention, that means we also have 85, 90 homes that are much larger, on larger lot sizes. You, quite frankly, I don't think you could have a game of catch on some of the front, the front yards of the homes. And you know, Mr. Whittington, you and Mr. Kemp are sitting further apart than the walls of these 3,000-plus square foot structures will, will stand. Because a number of them are planned to be only 10 feet apart, which makes sense. That's how he can maximize his profit, which I'm not against that, but I am against the density of RAD as it is proposed currently. It sounds like that a new site plan was presented today. I think that's great, but it deserves a period of public opinion before this committee takes action. Any community meeting after the fact, I don't, I don't see a whole lot of usefulness coming out of that. You know, I believe a zoning variance, by definition, and I may be wrong, this is the first meeting that I've attended, but a zoning variance would be appropriate to approve when the proposal results in an improvement to the surrounding area and to the community. And clearly, this plan as it stands currently is facing massive community opposition. And, you know, I wonder, no, no offense, I don't know any of you, you don't know me, I'm a nice guy, but I wonder if our opinions even matter from some of the comments tonight that, you know, no matter what happens, keep this in mind. You know, why is the meeting even public if you've already made up your mind before, before we're here? And I know this is just a recommendation to go to the, to the city council, but it sounds like there's enough in question that the proposal deserves tableing until more community input and more input from the developer can, can be provided. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Callaway. The, I appreciate your comments. I don't appreciate the remark about our, our decision being precooked. And just hear me out. There, nobody up here has decided before this which way we're going to vote. We have a staff recommendation based on other developments in the area. And then we volunteer to come up here and some of us take a little more abuse than the others, but we volunteer for this so that we can improve our community. The only reason any of us sit up here is because we care about Smyrna, and I mean that. And some of my comments, and you're absolutely right, I should be more clear, I'm trying to reassure you that this isn't always the end of the road with us. There's, there's another avenue. I always encourage the developers, I mean, they have, they have some legal rights themselves. And I always encourage that they work with the neighbors and the neighbors work with them because they could ultimately be your new neighbor for, albeit a short period of time. But in no way has anybody up here precooked the decision. No, I don't appreciate that, but I understand where it comes from as a, as a neighbor. All right. You can come back up, we're going to, you can come back up to the microphone if you want to make a comment, and I believe it was Mr. Mayo.
Yes. I just made those statements and I understand, I probably, I'm speaking probably for a lot of people out there. When you, we first started this meeting off, you made the comment that the developer has contacted all of y'all. And that causes me to have some second thoughts, to be honest with you, because I know the community hasn't been able to contact y'all. Maybe a laborer has, but I have that question. And I have to, I, so I have to disagree with what you just said because you put the element out there to make us think that the decision's already been made.
Okay, I, I understand that. And I was doing it out of, out of a measure of transparency so that you don't think that I'm, that we're precooked it.
I appreciate that.
That we, that Mr. Randall does, and most developers that are worth their salt, contact the people in the, on the, on the zoning board and try to get feedback from them. And I don't know if you heard his comments, that some of the items that through those communications changed how they were approaching this point.
I remember hearing those.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
But thanks for coming back.
Okay.
All right. We're not going to do, we're not going to do a redo for everyone, but is there anybody else that would like to come forward that hasn't spoken yet? You can go, absolutely. Come on, if you haven't spoken already. And guys, we could sit, we have to stop it at some point. We could sit here and just, you know...
I'm Kathy Harrington Johnson. I live at 483 Willowbrook Drive. I'm on top of the hill, but still down from the development. My husband and I just went through this probably about a year and a half ago for the development behind us called, Eric?
North Cooper Lake Place.
North Cooper Lake Place. My husband and I, we spent several thousand dollars of our own money, attorneys. We had, what are they, water, what is that, Eric?
I think you hired a hydrologist.
Hydrologist. And still, I have a life and death situation on my property from the development behind Everything that's in place, I guess, works, but what that we didn't foresee is a huge problem. I have a pond that is out on the left hand of my property that we decided when we moved there 17 years ago that we would not put back in because that. We have children, we have dogs, we have elderly that live in our neighborhood. And there isn't a fence or anything around it. And so if, if a child would come, lose a ball, you know, whatever, they could get in that water, the pond, you know, very easily. So for insurance, you know, purposes, liability, we decided not to put the pond back in. When it rains, not even a huge rain, and I have sent videos, many videos, to Eric, it ponds and it pools, excuse me, five, six feet. Sometimes it takes two days for it to precipitate in the, in the creek. You know, people, you all can go home and you don't have to deal with this, but we live there. I mean, this is our families that you are talking about in the creek. There is people that isn't here at this community meeting now, but they have been flooded. They don't have a lot of money, you know? And I mean, this is a liability. Something has got to be done to the creek before that you can allow any more water in on us. I mean, we can only, you know, we can only do what God has given us. I mean, we can't produce any more water. We can't produce the creeks to be any deeper. You know? I mean, you've got to really think about the neighbors. You've got to think about the families. You've got to think about the children that lives in this area. I own a business. I own business all over the United States. I understand about making money, but would I ever, would I ever want to do something to hurt someone to make a dollar? No. No. And this is what that you've got to come. Zoning, oh yeah, you know, I have a lot of houses behind me. I understand that. I understand that. It happened. I have to live with it. But we cannot live with any more water. We cannot live with any more water going through those creeks. You know, and we have a big retention pond. I can't tell you if it works or not, but I can tell you what. It's the part that we don't see. It's the part that we don't really realize the water that's going to come, you know, one way or the other, that it's not going to go in this retention pond. And that is what has happened to my property. So please, you know, think about this. Let's get some more studies. Let's look at the people that have lived in Bennett Woods for a number of years. Let's think about them because some of them are old, they're elderly, they live on a fixed income. They cannot, they cannot afford to go and to do whatever that they need to do, you know, if, if it floods their basements. Thank you. I appreciate it. And I do know some of you personally. I love Eric. He has worked with me and he has done everything that he said he was going to do. And I do know that your decision isn't made. And I know that, you know, you can table this or whatever, but I really think that, that we need to, you know, just for the people there. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much for your comments. And as much as I would like you to take back the nice things you said about Eric, I guess I'll, we'll let those go to public record as well.
Appreciate that.
Anybody else that has not spoken? Okay. Oh, one more. You can come on. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Williams. I, I live at 3796 Plumcrest Road. And I have met Eric and Sean at the end of my street following a rainstorm in the afternoon. And I will say that the conversation I had with them was very civil and they were very forthcoming with information. And I'm not going to talk about stormwater.
Okay.
Which should make you happy. Excuse me. I did look at the rezoning request and there's a section in it called rezoning analysis and there are nine factors that need to be considered. Number three is whether the property to be affected by the zoning proposal has a reasonable economic use as currently zoned. So I'm not sure how you quantify reasonable economic use, but my sense is that by saying we need to go from R20 to RAD, that as it's currently zoned, it can't be developed in a reasonable manner. So that's one factor I would like you all to consider, is whether there's another use for it. Obviously, I, I look right up Plumcrest Road at some beautiful trees. I will be looking at homes, the backs of homes that are pretty close together. I don't think that that's necessarily a complimentary type residential development in my neighborhood or right off my neighborhood. So that's a concern of mine. But another concern, and this is my, really my main concern and possibly the reason behind some of the discussions in our community or fears that this might turn into a townhouse community, Section 704 RAD provides for attached and/or detached single-family homes. My question is, if you rezone based on this proposal to RAD and for whatever reason, we have a PVC pipe farm happen, which has happened in Smyrna, and it doesn't go through as proposed, does it revert back to its original zoning? Or is this now a RAD-zoned area in perpetuity?
Rusty, Mr. Martin, would you answer that for her?
This is a good learning opportunity because you are right. This is a conditional zoning, so.
Okay.
It's RAD conditional, which RAD, you've listed all the permitted uses that are allowed, but the conditional aspect ties it to this plan specifically.
Okay.
Which is for detached housing. So the zoning in perpetuity, unless it's changed through another set of hearings and meetings and decisions, it'll remain this development forever until somebody comes back in and requests rezoning to a different category.
Okay.
With that being said, there is a provision for conditional zoning that if no substantial or no development activity takes place on the property within a two-year period, then yes, it would revert back to the original zoning.
The R20.
And the city would bring it back through the process as it is today because we can't just say, "Well, it's R20 at this point." No, it's got to go back through the legislative process and get reverted back. With that being said, if they were to move forward and they got their plan review and they got all their infrastructure out there and they're, they got the lots in, that's substantial development activity, that, that zoning classification is not reverting back.
Okay.
So it, basically, they have to not have building permits pulled or development permits pulled for it to be reverted back to R20.
But if they had already started building the lots out or dividing the lots out under the RAD conditional.
If they've got...
And someone else comes along and for whatever reason, you know, he goes to Tahiti or something and, and a new company comes along and wants to develop there, they can develop under RAD or single-family.
Well, you have seen us, if you pay, if you paid any attention to how the city meetings go and all that stuff, sometimes you'll see what we call zoning amendment. So, you know, we just went through this for the past four or five years with developments that were approved in 2006, 2007 that got halfway developed and then a new developer picked the property up and had a different product... picked the property up and had a different product or needed some variances or needed to amend the plan in some way. If that happens and they need to change the plan, we will bring them back to mayor and council for a full hearing and mayor and council can make a decision on that plan modification or the building elevations or changing the zoning stipulations. What we tried to hold them to is what's presented here today. And if anything changes, if Sean said, you know, this product's not working for me, I need to change, I need to make several changes. Well, Sean, that's not what you represented, we got to take you back before and allow public hearing and comment on the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Ms. Williams. All right. I do believe that's everybody that hasn't spoken previously. All right. Mr. Randall, and this is common practice, this is not cooking anything, but would you like to come back and address some of the concerns you've heard? Anytime we have this much public opinion, we try to give the developer an opportunity to address the concerns. Now, without going through holistically and addressing the concerns here tonight, can you just speak to the greater core of what you've heard?
I will be brief because I know it's been a long evening and I sincerely appreciate the planning board's time and I appreciate all the public comment. And let me just say that we do want to take into account some of the things we've heard, but like everyone in any business, time is money. And every delay, everything does cost us money. And I've heard a lot of things thrown out about a new site plan today. What I submitted had very, very minor changes. I mean, the plan with the storm drain going out to North Cooper Lake Road was probably three weeks ago planned. So the new site plan or the plan that's being shown up here always contemplated that storm drain going down Plumcrest, all in a pipe, all being contained, all not running down on neighbors anymore. So the new site plan that I passed to Rusty today included stuff like a 10-by-14-foot pavilion on the side of the road, a mail kiosk, because the U.S. Postal Service won't allow us to put an individual mailbox in front of every house, so we have to put a mail kiosk. Well, when you plan a subdivision, you have to plan for those kind of things now, even a single-family, you know, high-quality subdivision. So I want to stress that the new site plan was merely a refinement of what has been presented. And, you know, we'll tweak and change and modify as we need to throughout this whole process. It is a very, as this planning commission knows, the zoning and the approval process is a very fluid thing. It's constantly changing. We'll be making plans and changes. You know, we've made some minor changes in the Church Road property because we had to do certain things because we hit rock in the development. So, you know, these things happen, but I want to stress that we will, whatever gets a pass, if something does get passed, we live by that. And if we don't follow that plan, we have to come back in front of a public meeting and go through this process again to make any kind of substantial change. And Rusty, am I speaking the truth there?
Yes, sir, that's the requirement.
So...
That's why we have those 26...
Yeah, the 26...
...that put everyone to sleep.
It is zoned to a specific site plan and improves and includes, as you well know, very special conditions that are very site-specific that we have to live by.
Mr. Randall?
Yes.
Real quick, we've heard, there's a lot of opposition here.
Yes, sir.
And I don't mean to cut you off, but like, there's an amount of opposition here that needs to be addressed.
Yes.
And the real decision that you need to make is, do you want to move forward with a motion based on everything we've heard today? Your plan as you presented it, the opposition as it's presented?
Yes.
Or do you want to keep it in the flow of mayor and council next month? Is that, would that be your preference as to tabling? Because I've heard a lot of comments about tabling this item.
I'm looking back to...
And I'm not trying to sway you one way or another, I just know that you made a comment to me on the phone, I believe it was on the phone, could have been email, that you have, I believe you said, never taken a application to mayor and council without the zoning board's approval.
That is correct.
Correct, okay. And I just don't want...
Long time doing this, yes.
I understand. If you need a minute to discuss that, that's absolutely fine, but I think that's really the decision we need.
Well, and the only reason, it's not my decision alone. I don't own the property. I just have the property under contract. Sean and Sarah Elizabeth tend to own this piece of property, they live on the property, they have a house that they rent out on the property, so if I can take 20 seconds and converse with them.
That's absolutely fine.
What is all that mutual?
All right, the, it's a procedural item. If he gets declined today or denied today, if his application doesn't get approval and he goes to mayor and council with that blemish, if you will, and for some reason they don't approve it either, then this, it's important because the owners of the property and the developers are locked out for, Mr. Martin? 12 months, not being able to do anything, not being able to come back before this board with any type of new development. And I know he's conscious of that, and I just, it's commonplace for me to give the applicant, when there's this much opposition, the opportunity to make their own decision and say, hey, I do want more time to pacify these concerns, maybe modify the plan. Okay, that's all we're doing. And he could very well at this moment say, no, I want to push forward, and that's fine. We'll take our motion and move on. But that's all we're doing, is giving him an opportunity to make the decision and not just cast it upon him. Mr. Randall?
Chairman Powell, thank you very much. In conversing with the property owner, we feel like that we can address the concerns that were raised here, the ones that may be open and not fully addressed. We feel like we can address those between now and council, or not council, yes, city council, and that if need be, you know, we will be prepared to table at city council if we don't have that addressed. We realize that, you know, this is an advisory board, we'd love to have your support and we ask for your support. We think this project as submitted warrants your support. But again, time and time is money and we would like to move forward.
I understand completely. I just wanted to give you that opportunity and not just project it.
Chairman Powell, I appreciate it.
Okay. At this time, are there any further comments from the board? Anybody up here? There's been a lot of stuff said, or any questions for Mr. Randall since he's still here?
I just want to say that the neighborhood I live in, Smyrna, is Forest Hills and it's mostly R-20. And that's my big problem with this, what you're proposing is, if it was just 14 houses that fed onto North Cooper Lake, I would feel a whole lot better than this for this. It's those two houses you have that are not going to look like Bennett Woods.
And yes, Mr. Seagrave, I hear you loud and clear. And I do think in that process, we can get those lot sizes up to $16,000, $17,000, $16,000, $17,000 square feet. I think it was always contemplated that there would be two lots there. You know, at least that's my understanding, even under the old R-20. And so that's important to us, but we also realize how important it is to mesh with the rest of the community. And again, we'll work to design a site plan that does that as best we possibly can and will be held to that standard.
Any other questions for Mr. Randall? All right, thank you, Mr. Randall.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments from the board before we move? All right, nope, nothing further. And guys, we really appreciate, we really appreciate you guys coming out. It's obvious you're passionate about your neighborhood. I think everybody that sits up here is a little bit passionate about their specific neighborhood, but more specifically, Smyrna as a whole. And we do understand that the decisions we make impact all of our quality of life, and it's not something that anybody up here takes lightly. So having said that, I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, on zoning request Z15007, rezoned from R-20 to RAD conditional, I can't support RAD conditional. I think it should stay R-20, so I'll make a motion we deny the zoning.
We have a motion to deny. Do we have a second? Second, Mr. Seagrave? Have a motion and a second? There can't be, there's seven of us. Hold on a second. He can't make, can he second and vote?
Sure.
Okay. Well, the pardon, our parliamentary lesson here, but the application is denied for three. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Thank you guys again for coming out. We really appreciate all the input. The final item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes from the May 11, 2015 zoning meeting. Are the board members in possession of the minutes? Do we have any changes or amendments that need to be made at this time?
I may make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Motion to accept. Mr. Roberts, second. Second, Mr. Whittington. All in favor? Or, yeah, vote please. They're approved. Everybody vote, 7-0. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned at 8:23.